Good evening and welcome to the Akron Public School Board Meeting for September 10th, 2018. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Mr. Alexander?
Hello.
This is Baylor.
Here.
Mr. Bravo, present. This is Lasher.
Here.
This is Meadsfield.
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Reverend Walker, present. All right. Joining us tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance, our first time back having students lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance for the new school year, is Adam Davidson from Case Community Learning Center. Adam is a fifth grade student at KCLC, where he's been a student there since kindergarten. His favorite subject is math, and in his spare time, he likes to watch TV and draw pictures of sharks. Adam has a brother who attends Firestone and a sister who attends Litchfield, and he also has two dogs. So, Adam, if you could come up and join us and lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Tell us how you like your new building.
It's like, I like it big.
Can you tell us who you brought with you today?
I brought my mom.
My principal.
Please keep up the good work. Thanks for helping us.
We love Martha.
I love Ashlyn. Last time we saw Ashlyn, she was a tiny thing.
Well, thank you. And we know Adam probably has a lot of homework to do, so please feel free whenever he needs it.
Thank you, Reverend.
Thank you.
He'll be up here too, so.
All right. Next, we have community and school reflection. Would anyone like to start?
I wasn't here last meeting, but I wanted to, and I know everyone saw this, but I wanted to give a shout out to Fully Equipped, who donated all the equipment for the weight room at North High School. It was, I went to the event, it was very nice. The kids, I think, are going to really enjoy it, and it's a very nice weight room. But I want to thank them and Mark Murphy and his team, who are the ones who put that together. So I thought it was very nice. Everything was donated, so the school hasn't paid for nothing, nobody pays for any. Equipment is there, and it looks like a college weight room. I mean, it's nice now. So, and I think it's helpful, I just say thank, but I know it will help those kids be able to compete against other schools who have these weight rooms and so forth now that they could play ground. So I want to thank them for that. And also, Robin Cutler, who has a program in several of our middle schools, in Jennings, Litchfield, Resnick, Helen Arnold, Robinson Leggett, Bentley, Firestone, Firestone Park, King, I Promise School, and Sam Salem. And it's called Girls on the Run. It's not for girls who are on the run, but it's a program to talk to them about mentors. They talk to them about life skills and things of that nature. They meet a couple of days a week. And so I was glad to hear Ms. Cutler talk about that and say that we have that in schools. And again, that's something else. There's no cost to us, a service that we do for our students, and maybe we need some of that help. So I'm going to thank her for that.
Mr. Miller and I got to go to watch our Teacher of the Year be recognized for the Goodwill Employee of Distinction Award last week, and she was one of the top, it was top five, I believe, top five finalists in the whole county. So congratulations again for representing us so well. And then, one last thing is that my Leadership Akron class, Class 33, Marquee 33, has as our president Kemp Boyd, who is the coach of the Kenmore Garfield football team. And he gave us the great honor last week of feeding his team. So we went to, fortunately, it wasn't one of the hottest days last week. It was a little cooler, but I'll tell you what, it was hot in that fieldhouse for a serving pasta. But we went and served pasta to the team. And I would encourage anyone, if you get a chance, there's nothing that makes you feel better than giving. And so, being able to be appreciated and being so, the gentlemen were gentlemen. They shook our hands. They, you know, all those great soft skills, right? Looked us in the eye, shook our hands, thanked us very much for coming. And I have never seen pasta disappear so fast in my life. So, big thanks to Kemp and to the Kenmore Garfield team. And we'll get a win. That's all.
I didn't realize they did Leadership Akron after Class 32. Prove it.
It only got better.
Twenty-eight probably should have been the last one. The great twenty-eight. Thank you very much.
Okay. I had an opportunity to attend the Community Legal Aid sixty-six, that's sixty-six years anniversary celebration. One of the projects and programs that was interesting to me is our learning is for everyone. They have a program that, and a project that empowers parents and guardians to be the voice for children struggling in school. So they have a chance to learn. So I thought that was very interesting, because I had no idea that they rendered services of that kind. But this was to honor one of the guys who has excelled in pro bono services for people in the community. So it was really eye-opening for me to see that they were involved in children struggling with education. So.
A couple of things that haven't been touched on. I went to attend the fall graduation. It's always one of my favorite graduations. This year, there was not a lot of graduates, but that is a good thing, I believe, and not a bad thing. We had a lot of different ways for our students to graduate at the end of last school year. So, but once again, just the kids who stick around past their fourth year, you know, just the determination that they show, I think that's awesome. And my hat's off to them. And I was at the University of Akron football game this weekend, and at halftime, Ohio's pride, the University of Akron marching band had, I think it was five different high schools on the field with them, but one of them was our own East High School marching band was on the field. So that was pretty cool.
All right. You were brave. It was damp.
I have a couple of quick things. I don't think we've mentioned State of the County yet. That was a really fantastic event. I also got a chance to go to the United Way's Discover the Truth event, where they honored the Dorothy of Jackson Society. And they actually had an actor portray the journey of truth and deliver a biography and an adapted version of her speech on the stairs of the building. It was really, really amazing. Oh, it was so cool. I hope that that gets to happen more. It was really amazing. And we got to meet the newest class of the diversity on board that Leadership Akron does. So very cool event. And also, just quickly to mention, Athena Akron had their Women's Leadership Day. And so much of that is about the conversations that happen at the table. Our keynote speaker was actually a woman who volunteers for Girls on the Run as well, Zoe Trundle. And one of the discussion pieces at our table was about authentic leadership and the value of female leaders, and especially when it comes to education. A couple folks at our table remarked how cool it is to see all of the women that we have in our public education sphere. So thank you to all that you all do.
I think everyone mentioned most of what I was going to say on the State of the County also, because just APS and United Way, and a nice mention about the College and Career Academies, and kind of that being a part of a speech about education being headed in the right direction in Summit County. So kudos to everyone around the table. Also, the fall graduation, Tim mentioned, really fantastic event. And kudos to Mark Black, and had a nice conversation with him afterwards, just explaining why it was such a much smaller crowd this year, and how good that was for us. And really appreciated, you know, the kids that we did have, of course, and the work that goes into that. So thank you for that. Went to sign the, we finally, I think, put to bed most of the, signing all of the documents for the transfer for Ten North Main, and this is only about half the documents, but they took up an entire table. So I made an extra special trip to Redzel recently to just run the gauntlet and sign all the documents going around the table. And that was about half of them. So that was interesting. And then also, Tim mentioned the U Akron Home Opener, which was a lot of fun to see our kids on the field with U Akron and a couple other bands that were there. It was a lot of fun. Anything else before we move forward?
Hearing none. We have Communications and Recognitions, and I'm going to turn it over to Visa and Ginger to... Oh, my gosh, I'm sorry. Mr. Coleman, that was not intentional, no. My fault. I almost skipped over you. We do have a question. I'm so used to their not being. Mr. Coleman from the Let Me Learn program. I'm going to turn it right over to you. You have about three minutes to address the board. Mr. Pendleton, I hope us keep time, and I believe you have something for me up here. And I will listen and be ready.
I was told that all of you would mail a copy of my handout, so I'm going to be politically correct and give a second copy to the board president.
Thank you.
Thank you for inviting me. I was looking at young Davidson, man, if he could come up. I said I could come up. The mission of Let Me Learn is to empower students to engage with teachers using Let Me Learn and the brain and mind. Most of you sitting at different seats, you have the brain and mind on the second page, so I'm not going to go into it just in the beginning. But I've worked with the district for nineteen years. I've worked with thirteen different school buildings, what, three middle school, eight high school, and eight K-5 buildings. I worked with Elise Reeves in the year 2000, and she was a graduate of Booker High School, and she also became a graduate of the University of Akron. And then she came back to Booker High School, and she used Let Me Learn, and she received District Teacher of the Year. That was in 2000. Now, I met with Elise Reeves in 2015, but then she was married to Elise Clark, who was at the Skun High School, and she used Let Me Learn again. Mr. Bravo, you have a picture there. And she gave the students permission to select how they would demonstrate to her their understanding of the Cold War between Russia and the United States. And so this young lady, whose picture we have here, she decided, she called it a poster. And she actually drew the poster, and she also drew peasants. And after Ms. Clark looked at both of them, she threw them in the trash. And I asked her, I said, can I buy them from the student or from you? She said, whatever you give me, I give to the student. So I gave her fifteen dollars for each, and I had them both framed. So you can see what could happen when we give the students permission to do their own thing. Now, for those of you around the room, you've got a sheet that shows Let Me Learn scores, no names. And we both knew all the students about their scores, because Let Me Learn is that specific. Some want to liken it to learning styles, which it is not. Some want to liken it to Howard Gardner's moment, which it's not. And some want to liken it to the Myers-Briggs type end, which it's not. But the Myers-Briggs has ninety-two scores, Let Me Learn has twenty-eight. So I'll move on. Dorothy DeGel and Mrs. Board Member Lasher, she has something for you. She and Mrs. Thurman at Wyndham Mayor took fifteen regular education students and eleven special education kids. They combined them into one class. And as you know, the regular education kids have to hit a one ninety-six or a six seventy-two that goes to the fourth grade. The special ed kids only need to show growth. Well, this particular class, all eleven special ed kids hit the six seventy-two. They hit the same accomplishment as the regular education students. So you can see what can happen when you provide them. So I'm here to request funding. Howard Lawson funded for 2004 to 2014, and then Superintendent's Office funded from 2017 to 2018. And then, of course, I'm also a hard-time lecturer at the University of Akron. This is my nineteenth year doing that. And on page two, you've got the brain and mind, and then on page three, you've got, let me see if I can get you to it. This comes from, some of you have the sheet, but Wyndham Mayor outperformed their building this year. They outperformed the district this year, and they outperformed the national third grade average for students across the United States. And Erin Markovitz said this was amazing work, so I want you to see it. Now, Superintendent's very supportive of me, but his pockets are limited, so I'm coming to the board and ask them if they can work with the district to find some funds for us to continue this work, because I really think it's outstanding. And we focus on the letter, and Let Me Learn has been running this for its twentieth year. Have my hundred and three minutes if I am up.
You'll be right on it.
Now, hang them off, if you have questions and comments. I'll be available.
We have no other requests to address the board, but we do have some items under Communications and Recognitions. So now I will turn it over to Mrs. Nancefield and Miss Gaver.
Before we get into the state report card, I have an announcement to make. This is a bit of a surprise. Reverend Curtis Walker is being honored at the Fall Conference for the Northeast Ohio, Ohio School Board Association. You'll be the region selection for the all Ohio School Board. There are seven regions in the State of Ohio, and each of them gets to select one out of their outstanding board members. So that only will be recognized as an outstanding board member at the Fall Conference in October. I think it's the first week in October. So we'll all try to get there for that. But then you'll be recognized on the base stage in Columbus in November. They said we could surprise you. They said you can either surprise them or we will. I'm like, we will. So thank you so much for your service, Reverend Walker. It's nice to see that the state is recognizing us. So, getting into what was planned, I'm introducing Dr. Beth Williams Woods, and she's going to present on the educational report card.
Every September, the Ohio Department of Education releases local report cards for every school district. On Thursday of this week, September thirteenth, the report card will be posted to the OD website. Didn't it crash last time, like, second after the release? Yes. On the OD website, it releases it to the media. Our usual customers to give a preview to the board of what we believe will be posted on Thursday.
We always want to see the results first. As we've discussed every year, the report cards primarily capture test results from one moment in time. We have positive results to show this year with significant increases in student achievement. We also know, however, that our student success in the Akron Public Schools goes far beyond test scores on one moment in a time. So it goes beyond that one moment in time. So bear that in mind, please, as you listen to the presentation. We will also share with you district profiles that show you and the rest of the story of the success within APS. Success APS.
Well, thank you. So this is our annual presentation. And what I'm going to do is highlight the changes in the report card from last year to this year, and then I'll step through the preliminary results. None of the results are ever final until the state posts them. There can be small little tweaks, but we believe substantially what we're going to share with you tonight is where we will end in our report card. Obviously, the report card captures primarily the high-quality, rigorous teaching and Focus Area One. The results, it does capture some of the results that we're after in our district, but just as Mrs. Baylor was saying, we also know that there's other well-rounded aspects of our success. The state has enabled us to put on the state report card a website link to what we consider the rest of the story, that highlights our other successes. And I'll show you that as soon as the report card comes out. Howard Lawson and Mark Williamson also usually puts it right on the front of our report, our website, so that we can see this other data that includes our arts successes and some of our other accomplishments in the district that show the rest of the story. So I'll show you that as well. So the preliminary report, I'll review highlights and next steps. And then obviously, the timeline is kind of interesting, how this gets rolled out this week. So this is last year. This is not currently this year. I wanted to just remind everyone last year what the report card looked like, and that there's basically six components of the report card. That is consistent this year. And we have an achievement grade that's made up of the performance index and the number of indicators met. There's a gap closing grade, K-three literacy progress, which is the value-added grade. There's a graduation rate grade that's made up of four-year graduation rate and five-year graduation rate. And then Prepared for Success looks at your college readiness primarily. That's ACT score, SAT, honors, diplomas, things like that. Those six components are the same. Last year, up in the corner, it said the district grade that is going to add up all these component grades is coming in 2018. And here we are. This is the year, the first time in the State of Ohio that there will be one combined grade on every report card. So we'll, I'll show you where we believe we'll be when the grades come out on Thursday. So what I want to start with, and for those of you who've been on the board, you know my famous, this even was very famous at the Teacher of the Year banquet, that I have been showing the apples and oranges and bananas comparison, because the report card keeps changing every single year. The report card changed again this year. And I'll summarize at the end where it has changed. Some of the changes, unlike some of the changes of the past, have actually been positive changes. There's been a lot of advocating and lobbying across the state to have some more sensitive measures that pick up progress. And you'll see that for us, some of the changes that they made are positive changes. The other thing that's happening across the state, that Cleveland is actually leading across the urban districts, there's an advisory at the state looking at a total revamp of the report card. So by this time next year, there, this may look very different. It'll probably be a pineapple or, you know, something else that I would have to say, because they're looking at making our report card a much more well-rounded, not only based on test score type report card. So we're looking forward to that. Cleveland has been doing a lot of work and working with all of us across the Ohio eight, but they've been sort of the lead district with the state on helping make some of those changes. So here's the first change. Besides the overall grade this year, the gap closure measure is very significantly different. What they were finding in the past is that it really wasn't picking up on nuances of progress. So they changed it to look more at performance index scores by subgroup, so that you could see, are your students who are Hispanic, African-American, white, low socioeconomic, are they closing gaps between where our students are and kind of the state average? And they looked at that through a performance index score. They also added, which is kind of interesting for us, is this English proficiency with our English learners. So that's the new term for English as a second language, ESL. The state changed the term to English learners. So I'll try to use both to make sure you understand who I'm talking about. So they added to the gap closure measure, when students come in from another country and are learning English, are they making progress? And so you'll see, obviously, that's a huge piece for us in Akron, since we have a large population. You'll see what kind of impact that had on us. The other change is the subgroup size. We're on an, every year, they're going to be lowering the subgroup size as to when a subgroup counts for a district or for a school. In the past, it was thirty, right here. This year, they dropped it down to twenty-five. Now, for us, that's not a big impact, because we hit almost every subgroup, nearly at every school, because we have lots of diversity. For the suburban districts, this is a big deal, because they've been able to kind of hide and not have subgroups count in their report card quite often, because they don't hit the subgroup size. Well, now, more of the suburban districts, every single year, they're going to have more subgroups accounted for, and they're going to have some of the same impact that we have experienced. So for us, this is a good thing. Actually, David has spoken to the state about this need to make sure that there's an equitable playing field with both the suburban and urban districts. Another change is for value-added. This is a significant change. In past years, there weren't, you all know that we have changed tests nearly every year. When we went from PARC, well, we went with our regular achievement and OGT test, then we went to PARC test, then we switched to AIR test. So the past three years, they have not been able to use multiple years' worth of data in the value-added calculation. They could only use one year or two years, because the tests were all different. This is the first year that they're using three years' worth of data. And I'm going to show you the impact for us. This is somewhat of a negative impact for us and many districts across the state, and I'll explain why when we look at our data. Here's the reason why three years' worth of data is rough for districts for value-added. This is the state. I'm showing you state data. This is not the Akron Public School. This is the state performance index. You can see that before we switched to the PARC test, this was the PARC test, this huge drop happened. And then from PARC to AIR, another huge drop happened. This is state average performance index. So everybody was dropping. Everybody dropped ten to twenty-five points, okay? Value-added is measuring progress. Are you making progress? Are you making a year's worth of growth in a year's time? If you're seeing huge drops from one year to the next, your value-added score is going to be a negative number, right? A big negative number. It might be a negative twenty, or a negative thirty, or a negative fifty, because you're going backwards. Instead of showing a year's growth, you're going backwards. When you combine these years where everybody was dropping like crazy, your value-added, now that they're using three years, they're using this year, they're using sixteen, seventeen, and then seventeen, eighteen. So even if we increase this year, you've got two years' worth of dropping data that's going to tank your value-added score. Do you understand that? So three years, it's going to take us another year or two to get rid of this big, huge drop that happened. Okay? And so I'll show you, here's, this is kind of the actual, this is, again, state performance index grades. And this is just to show you, here's the PARC test, here's the AIR, and AIR. So we'll be able to, next year, we'll be able to start to remove some of these dropped years. Okay? And you'll see that in a second. Another change, which is a positive change, and you heard me complain about this last year pretty vehemently, is last year, in the high school exam results, they were including whenever a kid in later grades retook tests. They were combining retake tests with first-time test takers. So if you were taking Algebra I, and the kids who didn't pass Algebra I, when they would retake it again, all those scores were dumping in with the first-time test taker. all those scores were dumping in with the first-time test taker. Well, you can imagine when you're retaking the test, the percentage of passing is a little bit, is lower for those kids because they're struggling and they're trying to retake it. And they would dump the scores in, and it was really hurting a lot of the scores across the state. Every district in the state complained about this, and they separated it out. So now this year, the Algebra I is straight Algebra I first time. And then they have a separate indicator that says all the retakes are combined in a separate indicator, which is very positive for us. One, last change, K-3 literacy. They raised the, they raised the targets. So this is last year. You can see what the scale was for K-3 literacy. And this year, you can see these are pretty substantial increases. To get a C, it jumped from 23% all the way to 34%. That's a huge jump in K-3 literacy. So we, you'll see the results for us, but know the K-3 scale went up. And you'll see the impact. So those are the changes. Now let me show you, here's where we ended up on our report card grades. So here's K-3 literacy and our history. We had gone up to a C last year, but we dropped down to a D. This little asterisk means the, the calculation changed. Okay? Just so you know, they raised the bar for K-3 literacy. We didn't hit the new raised bar. Okay? So we dropped down to a D. Which was very disappointing because obviously, that's been a point of pride for us for K-3 literacy. You'll see that we're still doing very well on the third grade guarantee. I'll cover that. Here's the third grade guarantee. Here's where we are. Even though the bar was raised, we still have 98.3% of our students were promoted. And that is, that is, you know, the other urban districts have hundreds and hundreds, up to 400 kids that are retained. This year, we had 23 compared to the hundreds of students in other urban districts. And that's all because of that fine woman sitting over there in red. We, we had to dress alike today. Mary Alley Kelly and the work that she's done with all the supports through the year plus the very intensive summer reading program that she has. And we're still, yes. And we're still working that. I mean, we're still, we're doing intensive work even with the kids who are retained because there is a way to promote them midstream. So if they do well this fall and early this fall, we can promote them as we go through the year. Our gap closure, we got a B, which we were absolutely thrilled. We were holding tight with first a D as the reports were coming in. And then they added the ESL, or English learner growth in English, and it moved us up to a C. Because we earned the maximum number of points on our growth in English learning skills. And that, we can thank Karen Jijic and Lloyd for that because that was incredible. First time out with this type of measure to earn the maximum points is pretty unheard of. And so we were thrilled. And then, our one-year value-added results were added into the gap closure. So part of the new gap closure is they look at growth from last year to this year. And that bumped us up to a B. Because the growth that we've made, that I'll show you from 16, 17 to 17, 18 is substantial. It's actually been the most growth that I've experienced in my 10 years in this position. And that bumped us up to a B, closing gaps. Then the prepared for success is an F. And I, I'm going to break each one of these down. Here's our value-added is an F, but the, the calculation changed because now we're picking up three years instead of just one or two years' worth of growth. Our indicators and performance index score, we have an F and a D. And then our four- and five-year graduation rate, we increased our five-year graduation rate, moved up to a D because we're above 80% now. And there's also a new report of chronic absentee rate. And I put that on there just because this is going to be an area that we're going to talk a lot about, is having a whole campaign with Mark Williamson on this chronic absenteeism and making sure that we're getting kids to schools so that they can take advantage of our academics. So now I'm going to kind of show you highlights of each one of these. This is the way that they've combined all these six components, what weight each one of them carries. So the achievement component is worth 20%. Progress, which is value-added, is 20%, et cetera. This is what our mock-up of our report card is going to look like with the, the D, B, and D that I just shared with you. And then our Fs here, our overall grade, we believe is going to be a D. The significance of that is that to be, to fall under Academic Distress Commission, which some of our urban brothers and sisters have done, including Lorraine and Youngstown. The new criteria, now that we have this overall grade, and I gave you at your retreat, I gave you a report that kind of stepped through this. But it's even more important now that we have this overall grade. The new criteria is if you get an F as a final grade, three years in a row, you're under the Academic Distress Commission. The state comes and takes over. The board loses a lot of their authority and a new commission comes in. And so we call it, we call it the three strikes and you're out. So we are not, we have a solid D. This isn't a close skimming D. This is a very solid halfway to a C. So we feel confident that as long as we continue the progress we're making, we're not going to be falling under the Academic Distress Commission. Now I say that, and then I said, and now we have a report card commission working at the state that could change everything next year. And hopefully, all of those will be positive changes for us because things will change. But currently, we feel very confident that we will stay out of that trajectory towards the Academic Distress Commission. Here's the achievement improvements that I was talking about. This is, our English Language Arts is the first half and then math. And here's 2016 results, and then 2017 and 2018. So I gave you three years. The green means did it improve from 2017, 18? And here's the point increase. You can see, these are not small little .1 increases or .3 increases. These are substantial, 5, 6.9, 6. Look at Algebra, 15.1, six-point increases. And in my 10 years, we have never had these kind of results. Third grade just killed us. Mary and I both, you know, kind of cried over this. But we do, we've made some changes, streamlining some assessments. In third grade, the teachers and kids were slammed with so many assessments because of the third grade guarantee that we're trying, we believe that that may play a part. That they're just test fatigue, plus they're not having as much time in instruction because they're assessing so much. So we actually have worked collaboratively with Pat Scheit, who's here tonight, to look at streamlining our assessments. But the, the rest of this kind of condensed, consistent improvements with these kinds of increases, we haven't had in my tenure. So we're all thrilled that we've seen these kind of increases. They are consistent with our math results. You've heard me say that because the report card changes so often, we rely on our math results, which is our district assessments. And this just demonstrates that, that we're decreasing our, our intensive students and we're increasing the number of students that are proficient in the green from year to year and fall to spring. This is our writing improvements on the state tests. Again, we're seeing significant increases in our writing. Writing has been a major priority for us under Karen Jijic's leadership. And we saw considerable growth from last year to, from 16, 17 to 17, 18 in writing. Science and social studies, the same thing. You can see the theme of this year is this steady improvement across the board. And again, these significant improvements. These aren't just tiny little improvements that we're making. Okay, that's the achievement side. Now we'll look at K-3 literacy. The unfortunate thing is we dropped from a C to a D because they raised the bar. This is actually what the report card will show. Is this is from the students who were on track or not on track for each grade level. So this is the number of students who come in on track and off-track in kindergarten. And you can see, we increased the number of kids on track, but then in second grade, there's all of a sudden a drop. And we're, this is based on math data. And we're actually, the version of the test changes in second grade that it doesn't read to the kids like in the younger grades. And so we're actually, this year, we're switching and having the second graders take the K-2 assessment to see if that makes a difference. So I'll report that out next year. And then we rebound pretty significantly for third grade. The third grade guarantee, I mentioned that 98.3% of our third graders were promoted to fourth grade. Even though the bar was raised, last year it was 98.6. So we're still very pleased with that work. Our graduation rate, we increased from 74.3 to 76.4. And we are above 80 here. So we increased our report card grade from an F to a D for our five-year graduation rate. Yes?
What is the percentage, you've talked about this before, for the kids that are with us the entire four years and the kids that are not?
Actually, going to show you that. I'm going to show you the chart. I'm glad you keyed that up beautifully. For the students who are with us versus who move in and out during the four years. So I'll show you that actual graph. Here's the trends. I thought you might like to see the trends of our graduation rates. You can see when the assessments changed, that things have dropped off. Most importantly, this is our four-year rate that's rebounding. And then we believe will be about in the 83% range for our four-year rate from this year from all of the graduation pathway changes that we were able to put into place. So we're, you know, back on this positive trajectory for graduation rate after making the adjustment to the Common Core standards and the tougher assessments that came in. The prepared for success, this is probably the indicator that we are going to focus on the most. And Mark Black and Rachel Teca have already put a lot of changes in place with career education for industry credentials. And Mark putting in a lot of additional supports for ACT and SAT. Because these are the four indicators that go into the grade of the F. And we, we truly believe that we should be able to get through our college and career academies, we imagine that this industry-recognized credential will increase substantially because we're building in those credentials through every one of our pathways. And we're also working to, to increase the number of honors diplomas for this measure. So this is probably our weakest area that we have already put plans in place to increase this. Our gap closure, I mentioned that we have a B. These are the subgroups that are measured for the gap closure to look at whether you're closing gaps from where your, at the Akron Public Schools is against the state average, and are you closing gaps? We, in English, are, we have gaps that have closed across all of these subgroups except for Black and students with disabilities. They're closing gaps, but not at the pace of our other subgroups. So we have, we will be carefully looking at the Black and the students with disabilities to look at what else. And at the end of my presentation, I'll show you what our focus is going to be for this next year to address some of the areas of concern. And then math, our gap substantially closing for all of these subgroups except the Black and white subgroups. Again, they're closing gaps, but not at the same pace. And we don't want some to be closing gaps substantially and others just a little. We want to keep everybody on the same pace. And I'll show you our recommendations in a few minutes. This is your talking point page when people say, hey, how did you all do in the Akron Public Schools? Here's the talking points. Our student achievement continues to show strong and steady improvement. And what I want to highlight under Mark Black's leadership, because this has never, ever, ever happened in the history of the Akron Public Schools, that 100% of our middle school grades and subjects and 100% of our high school grades and subjects improved from 2016, 17 to 17, 18. And I think we need to give. And Karen can also help with this and we need to go. One of the keys that Mark has really identified is they have focused a lot on, in the past, our interventions have been more focused on, you go through the semester, and once you fail, then you go do credit recovery, or you go do summer school, or you go to evening high school. And they've completely revamped the way we do it so that once students start to struggle during the semester, they're immediately given intervention. We call it live-time intervention. So that instead of waiting for summer school to catch them up, Mark has enabled all of the high schools to be able to provide intervention as soon as students are struggling so that they catch up. We are substantially closing gaps between subgroups of students and students across the state, which is why our gap closure is a B. More students are graduating in four years, and we continue to have this high percentage of third-grade students being promoted. Now I want to show you, and I will be sure to also send this to you so that you have the exact link. On the report card, there is, it's hidden a little bit, which is, which is a little annoying that it's not real obvious on the report card. But if you click on the district link, there is another link that we are able to put on the state report card that tells the rest of the story, that we can put. Here's the other highlights that we believe tell the story of our progress. And we call it our Akron Public School District Profile. And on this page, there are a lot of highlights about the arts, about college and career readiness. That this is, if people are asking about the Akron Public Schools and who are we and what are our successes, this is where you can point to them. And this link, as soon as we update it each year, which it's updated now, it always gets added to our, the front of our webpage. Here's what Patrick, Mr. Bravo was looking, was prompting me to share. This is from last year. So we don't have, the state hasn't released our cohort data yet this year. So this will be updated as soon as Howard Lawson has the new data. But what this shows is, here's our four-year graduation rate. This is the graduation rate for students who are not with us for all four years of high school. So these are students who come in and out primarily from charter schools. They move in and out, or they're here for two years out of the four years. We have tracked those students and calculated that their graduation rate is, would be 48% when you pull them out separately. And this is our four-year graduation rate if they're with us for four years. So you can see, if we get to touch the students and impact them for four years and provide the education that we train our staff and the curriculum and the digital literacy that we have, the one-to-one environment that we're now doing. we have, the one-to-one environment that we're now doing, we get to an 81%. And then it goes up even higher in a five-year graduation rate if we get to keep them that entire time.
But on the report card, it's reported as what? Is our four-year?
Our four-year is 70...
76.4.
Yeah, 76.4. So it's 76.4 versus this 81.7. Okay, and that's 80% on the five-year versus 86%. And you can, there are other reports on here that show other growth in terms of our English language arts and other data that we're proud of here that kind of tells the rest of the The next steps with the report card, the way that this gets released on Thursday is in the early morning, our superintendent will get a spreadsheet of every district across the state of Ohio. And we get it, we get to hang onto it for one hour before the rest of the world gets it. But we'll get our, our results, final, final, final results, and we'll get the spreadsheet with everyone else so that we're prepared for any reporters that say, well, how did come this district did this? We have an hour to take a look at it. It's not a lot of time. Then one hour later, the spreadsheet's released to the media. And then an hour later, the ODE website goes live with everybody's formal, pretty report cards. And then literally, Mrs. Mansfield's right, within about five minutes, the system usually crashes because everybody's going to it at the same time. And it's usually rough that entire day. What we always do is we analyze, especially for us, we want to see how did everyone else do? We want to look at state trends. We want to see where we, if our increases are similar to other districts or where we're excelling compared to others. So we'll do that. And then we dig into the building by building analysis against those state trends as well. The positive adjustments for 18, 19. So this is what my team across the, on the outside of this room, we have been diving into this data throughout the summer, obviously, and making already some adjustments last year that you're familiar with. The, the kind of theme is deepening these strategies around cultural competency with Carla Sibley's work in particular. When we see the subgroup, the African-American subgroup and the students with disabilities not making that same pace of improvement to close the gaps, that tells us that all of this area, we need to keep working on and deepen even more. The work that Mr. Miller is doing around the behavior supports, that will certainly play into this because the more we can reduce the loss of instruction, either because of disruptive behavior in the classroom for all the other students, or for the one student who's disrupting, who's out of class, all of that loss of instructional time, we have to try to, to limit. We have streamlined our assessments this year so that we're not quite so heavy, so that every teacher, we've put more ownership on teachers to design their own assessments through their professional learning communities. We believe that will have an impact. Our high schools restructured their administrative teams to be able to continue to lead this work. That was a huge undertaking that you all so graciously supported. That will make a big difference as we move forward. And then this is all of our college and career academy work that will continue that improvement, particularly in the area of STEM instructional strategies and relevant education and tapping into students' interests that will get all students pre-K through 12 more focused. So, questions?
Comment?
Yes.
Looking at the numbers of our English language learners and how they came in and they've done so well, then looking at the African-American group and those white students who have not performed, should we take a deeper dive and see what they're doing that's right and maybe what the other group may not be doing that's right? And try to find out what can we, what we can do to, what they're doing on one end to help on the other end so they can improve. And I know you mentioned there with looking at culture, kind of seeing different things. I look at culture, continue the rigor, because rigor has to be there if we want our kids to improve. Maybe taking a deeper dive into what, that one subgroup is doing that's really helping them, or what are we doing to help them get to that point? And maybe what we need to, or not, what we may not be doing to help those others.
Right, absolutely. And we also believe that, you know, our huge focus and Mary Alley Kelly and Mark Black are working with their principals on this rigor relevance and relationship piece. And that's kind of their theme for this year with the principals and then the principals with their staff. That relevancy piece, you know, that's really what this whole movement of our pre-K through 12 college and career academy is, is getting kids engaged and interested in what they're learning. We believe that's a key to all of this. You have to have the relationships, which is where a lot of the cultural competency work comes in. But you also have to tap into what kids are engaged in. And I think for the English learners, when they come in, they're so focused on learning English and kind of enculturating, that relevancy is sort of right there with them. And we can learn from that in terms of the other subgroups. But our Hispanic students, you know, they're making the growth, our students in poverty are closing that gap as well. So we have those pockets of excellence in the other areas that we've got to be able to keep focused on students with disabilities and our African-American students.
It does make a difference in culture and what they do and how they perceive and how they see things.
Yeah.
It's a big difference and we gotta look at those things.
Yeah. I also think the family resource center that we're, you know, piloting at the IPS school and that KeyBank is supporting in the East Cluster, I think that's also gonna make a huge difference when you can, when you're not just focused on the student, but you're also focused on the whole family dynamics. I think that, and we're hoping that the Boca Cluster will be the next cluster up, that we're hoping that that also will make a substantial difference.
We have to find out what makes the kids tick. We find out what makes them tick, then we have, if we don't, then we lose.
Other questions?
I was just gonna say, I love that you provide the district profile too. I mean, there's so much more to our students than just what's reported on this one report card every year. And I know we say that a lot, but there's so much more, I think, to the story in general for Akron Public Schools than what gets reported on this one report card. And, you know, the only challenge with that composites, those, all of those composite scores or aggregated scores is they just don't tell the story. They don't tell the profile of our students. They don't take into effect, or take into consideration what it means to, to be an urban school district, or what it means to have income equality, or the effects of poverty on education and teaching our students and that big gap. We have a lot of, and when you see the four and five-year graduation rates with students that are with us the entire time and not with us the entire time, it really highlights the failures, I think, from a more global perspective, but really felt locally with the charter school movement and the shortcomings of that and what happens when an urban district has to pick up the pieces for the students that fell through the cracks elsewhere. And when you see the graduation rate for the kids that are with us the whole time and we're, you know, pushing 90 percentile, and then you see our graduation rate on our report card is in a 76 percentile, and you realize, well, what's going on there? Well, look at the number of kids that didn't spend the whole time with us and what happened when they were in and out, in and out.
Just this afternoon, our team said, you know, when, when we were discussing the graduation rate, when students come in from Ada District, and it might be a junior who has two credits or three credits, you know, and then now they're with us and now they're counting with us, but that's a long journey to get them there. And as you know, we don't give up. We have AAA and we keep working with them. But that's, those are the challenges. Now, if we had had them in the ninth grade, we would have had a lot more options.
And then every single measure, they're dragging those scores down. And the best we can hope for is that maybe we'll get some value add there. And, you know, so I mean, kudos again to Mary Alley Kelly, who's, you know, prepped those kids to get us those middle school and high schools.
Elementary is the foundation. She always preaches.
Mark and his team from middle schools and high schools and, and to all the team and the superintendent for the measures that have been put in place, I guess, to address some of these things going forward and keep us on that upward trajectory and out of the academic distress commission. And it was a board, that's what we sit here and think of. And I know I've probably badged you more this year than any other year about where are we, where are we, where are we? Because I see our urban counterparts, you know, Moraine and Youngstown and what they're facing and that, I don't want to be anywhere near that. But with those, with the voice that you've shown and those significant increases, and then you put in I promise and the college and career academy's wall-to-wall under Wonder World technology and, I mean...
The joy of working for our superintendent is he's willing to take crazy risks that these guys around the table are willing to do. So when Mark comes to him and says, you know what, why are we spending all this money on summer school? Let's not do that in the summer and let's do this and do live time and we'll have this. He says yes. And he, but that's a risk. Those are all risks that we're taking because it may completely blow up. But, but he is willing to take those risks, just like our one-to-one was a huge risk. But that, it's been very successful.
I just want to say to Patrick, the point is interesting as watching State House report this past weekend on News Network. And they were interviewing, I had to look his name up, Mike Duffy from Worthington and also Peggy Laner. They were talking, and they spent 15 minutes of that show talking about the state report card. I thought it was interesting out of Duffy's mouth how he talks about, you know, these letter grades are indicating more than anything else, the inequity in funding in the school districts that are getting these tests. So, you know, maybe there's a, you know, a change of thought that might help us from that standpoint. I thought it was very interesting, quote right out of his mouth.
Not to jump back in, sorry, but I said today to that point too, that also becomes a self-fulfilling prophecy. I mean, if you're, you know, if you boil it all down to one letter grade, one moment, one shot, one moment in time, one shot deal, and that's what you advertise to the public. And then I'd love to see a study that showed, you know, what does enrollment look like in certain districts since these report cards have started coming out? Have they helped or hindered? Because they've in no way helped. And we still have to be here and we still have to educate the students that are here.
It was interesting because he even said he was a proponent of this new report card system. He's done 180 for some reason. I don't know if his school district was negatively impacted by it, but he talked about, you know, English learners as one example, that, you know, maybe that's impacted him as well. And now he's hearing from educators in his own district that, you know, you're supporting something that's counterproductive to everything we're doing.
I'd just like to say kudos to, to all you guys because it's hard with all the inconsistencies that come to you guys from the state, changing tests, doing this, doing that. But for some reason, you guys, you know, you get in the ring and you, you rise to the occasion. Even if it doesn't appear to be, you showed us tonight exactly how you guys, you know, get to where you are and the different things you do once you get another mandate from the state. You know, you guys always find a way to increase the, the outcome to a higher or a positive note. So from just looking at it, it's like, you know, hopefully this group that they put together will put something in place that's consistent. Change is good, you know, but let's be consistent for at least enough time for people to really get, take hold to what it is that needs to happen and, and have the opportunity to produce those outcomes, you know, and then, you know, carry on from there.
Their two principles are, that they're working on is, can we explain that, can we explain the report card to, you know, anyone off the street? Number one, you can't with all, you know, with all this, the complexity. So they're trying to simplify. And then the second thing is, is it more than just a test score that's on a one sit-down moment with students? Is it picking up the well-rounded students? So that's, that's the two things they're trying to work on.
Just an example of that, Mr. Miller, if I said I got a 76.4 on my test today, what would you, what grade would you say I got?
A C, 78.
Sorry, I picked the wrong. I would have gotten a C, right? Maybe even a C plus. So to me, that's always, and I think this is the ninth year in a row that I've had this conversation, when I talk to someone and they say, your graduation rate is an F, that means more than half of your students are failing. And I say, no, it isn't. We're almost at 80%, because I'm gonna bump that up a little bit, right? And they'll say, no, you're just making that up because it doesn't make sense to people. So that's...
When you apply a letter grade.
When you apply a letter grade, or even when I look at 76.4%, that, everyone who went to school knows that that's a C. I mean, it's just, that's what our brain does. So that's number one. And of course, we want 100% of all of our students to graduate and graduate on time. We want that. That's what our desire is all along. Again, ninth year in a row, preaching to the choir, but even the choir's gotta practice. They need to rehearse. So one of the things I want to say about graduation rate of the students not with us too, let's not forget that a lot of those students, you know, we want to say, oh yeah, if they've just been with us, but a lot of those students, life has really happened to those kids. Right? There is a reason some of them are back with us or just with us. It could be, and, and I'm gonna say, more than half of them are not their fault. So if they're coming to us and they're coming their junior year and they've got two credits, they've lived a life somewhere that has not probably been very easy. So we don't want to dismiss those needs. We want to get them where they're gonna go. But doggone it, if they count, it shouldn't count against us. That's all we're trying to say.
It would be a shame for us to hand them another charter school brochure and say, why don't you try this? But we would not do that.
Absolutely not.
Because we know we can get them there if they come to us.
And then, just so I'm not preaching, sorry.
My purpose is to improve their lives and take a low graduation rate.
I will take a low graduation rate every day. Absolutely, to stick with those kids, especially that life has happened to. And then, just so I'm not just preaching, sorry for Walker. So I have, okay, so I have a question in here too. Remind me, the students with disabilities...
Preach the congregation.
Students with disabilities and English language learners are, I don't know why I'm stuck on graduation rate today, but is that, are they held to that four-year standard? I can't remember. So if you've got a student that's allowed to stay with us till they're 22 by state law, do they still count against our four? I thought so. And so, English language learners.
We're allowed to see them through 22, English learners. We do the same thing. We continue to work with them, especially when they come to our country and they're sophomore, junior year, we continue to work with them. That's a, that's a perfect example of how we, we, obviously, we're gonna give you more years to continue with us.
Absolutely.
We can support you and we know that's gonna, we're gonna take a hit on that.
It shouldn't count against us.
If there's a six-year graduate, that counts the same as a drop-off?
Yes, yeah, because you don't get credit for them at six years, seven years.
So all the students with disabilities who can stay till they're 22.
And students with disabilities, you know, technically, we could graduate them because they've earned the credits and we could graduate them. But they can stay, right, they can stay until they're 22 and continue to get life skill instruction. And, you know, we could send them up the draw, but we would never do that. They need, especially if their IP team says they need to continue to work on their skills, then we're gonna take them. But that's a hit on our graduation rate.
That's more important to their lives.
Exactly. That's, right. Some of that is morals and values built into some of the results, right.
But if you know that from the powers that be, why, why don't they factor it in? We know that we have all these special cases.
We have higher per... We have higher percentage. We have a much higher percentage. That's part of the lobbying and advocating that...
The superintendent is the one.
Yeah. And Cleveland's has been the lead with the report card because they, uh, what they've put together, we've all endorsed in terms of what they're trying to do. And they're trying to tackle these types of issues.
Just quickly, what I appreciate so much about this team and this conversation and this leadership is it doesn't matter if it's an apple or a banana or a pineapple or a motorcycle, we care about our students.
That's right.
And that is the thing that we're all focused on and it very clearly sounds like it is in the whole picture of the student. Our grade feels very different to me in my mind now after hearing the comparison. So thank you for that. Absolutely. Thanks.
That's right. It's your first time hearing the explanation. I'm a...
Yeah.
Right.
Pineapple, apple.
Banana.
I like a motorcycle.
What did you have to do? Thank you.
And the practice for the...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm proud of you.
All right. Moving forward, we have approval of the meeting minutes, the regular meeting from August 27th, 2018. We have a motion. Second. Ginger and red. Yes.
He gave it up.
Any comments, questions, discussions on the minutes? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander.
Very. Mr. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 55 personnel recommendations. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
No move.
Second. We have a motion in the second on the personnel recommendations. Any comments, questions, or discussions there? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Next, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration one motion and several resolutions on the consent agenda. These recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
No move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second on the consent agenda items. Um, I just want to point out items number six and seven and just say a quick thank you as always to AMHA and the City of Akron for continuing to support our Akron After School program. Just more enrichment activities, I think, that go towards the discussion today about things that we put in place and try to keep in place to give our students every opportunity to succeed. Each of them with $200,000 grants towards Akron After School, this is a big deal and I just want to say thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Just on item four under the donations, I, I don't recall if I said anything about Barbara Tree and her help of taking their time to that.
Yeah.
Their Resnick C L C. Uh, but I, they donated their time for that effort. I just want to make sure we, we don't say that publicly.
Glad you said that. Settle it. I had it, but, um, good. Any other comments, questions, discussions on the consent agenda? Hearing none, roll call please. Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
And finally, Mr. President, I have before me for your consideration 11 business affairs recommendation and recommendations and one item on the business affair supplement that I'd like to highlight. Um, in that supplement, um, it includes a cooperative agreement between Akron Public Schools and Key Bank to partner in support of the Key Bank Academy of Business and Health Services at E C L C as part of our College and Career Academies program. Key Bank is committing an end-kind donation of $200,000 over a three-year period, $100,000 in end-kind services in the first year beginning September 11th tomorrow. Um, and then $50,000 on each anniversary, um, through, uh, September 11th of 2020. Uh, with that, these recommendations are in proper form and I move their approval.
And just want to point out, um, item number one, Dreams Day, an annual event that Akron Public Schools does. Can I bother you just to give a 20-second or 30-second?
Sure. Well, actually, my, this is kind of right here. Talk about the, the Dream Day. Okay, so Dream Day, we'll have our third annual, um, Dream Day event this October 30th. Um, and it is an event for all of our seniors and it's a conference-style opportunity for them to explore what opportunities are available to them as they prepare to enter adult life after high school. So there'll be sessions on college planning, career, um, career planning, resume writing. There's a keynote speaker. There's NCAA eligibility sessions. So students, seniors, and across our high schools will have opportunities to kind of customize that experience to what their plans are after graduation.
And also workshops on financial aid and applying for financial aid, representatives from employers and armed services and...
I went last year. If you get a chance, just, I just hopped my head in. Please, board members, take a, take a five minutes or 10 minutes. You'll want to stay longer. But I went over during my lunch hour last year and walked through. It's an amazing opportunity. Um, and I, you know, just walk around and thank the businesses for being there too. But the students just are enthralled. Um, it was very much like a conference that we go to and their first experience in it.
And that's the neat thing, different, you know, exposure is, it means so much. Exposing our children to as many things as we possibly can is a great value. And I appreciate you guys. I mean, you guys are on it. So thank you very much and thank you, Mrs. Mansfield, for sharing that. It sounds like a wonderful event with you.
Very good. Thank you. Uh, any other comments, questions, or discussion on business affairs? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Superintendent's report?
Uh, Mr. President, earlier today, I was in Columbus at a, uh, it was called the Ohio Mayoral Education Attainment Summit. It was actually sponsored by, uh, several organizations, including the Ohio Mayor's Alliance and several associations of colleges and universities. Basically, uh, the graphic that I'm passing out is a summary of, um, industry and educational attainment and workforce data for Akron. And so, uh, just following up on the, uh, report that Assistant Superintendent Dr. McWilliams Woods gave, it'll highlight some of the information she provided and then also some of the workforce, uh, information. And basically, uh, the gist of the conference was to make sure that, um, our mayors, superintendents, and community college, four-year college presidents understand, um, some of the goals that Ohio has set out for educational attainment. By 2025, 65% of adults will have a two-year or four-year college degree or a, um, credential that supports a living wage. Um, the thing that was probably most telling to me was, you know, conversations from, um, two economists who talked about, um, how do we support educational attainment? And, you know, and of course, it is about, you know, having excellent teachers, which we do. You know, but Lisa, I think you mentioned it, you know, all else being equal, yes, but there's a whole lot of other things that kids have to go through in our community that can be barriers to their educational attainment. And those are some of the things that, you know, I think we're addressing. And when, again, when you look at our I Promise School and, you know, looking at trying to handle some of the social, emotional issues that kids have, you know, it's important to recognize some of those other barriers that kids face. I mean, when you look at in our community, I know a couple of my staff, we've talked about this, you know, look at the issue of transportation, you know, how are kids going to get to that internship or that postgraduate job, you know, without transportation? So those are some things that we really have to look like, look at because a lot of those things are impacting these numbers as well. It's not just what happens in the classroom. It's what's happening at home, to and from school, and, and quite a few other places. So it was a very, very interesting, uh, a very interesting summit.
Do we know when we're, when they're taking some of this data? Because I...
Some of it is census data. On the reverse side, I think most of this data has come from our report card. The one, um, item, uh, the first item on the percentage ready for kindergarten, those are different than the numbers that I had gotten internally. The other numbers pretty well match up. So I have to check with our data person about why those numbers are the same.
Yeah, I was curious. The 4.5% of students less than ninth grade, less than ninth grade, so the very first under Akron, Ohio's Big Goal, shows 4.5% of our students dropped before ninth grade? I'm looking, I don't know which one.
Oh, no, these are, these...
The one that says Ohio's Big Goal.
Those are for adults 25 and older, what their level of educational attainment is.
Okay, so they weren't necessarily in our school.
Exactly.
They just live in the city of Akron.
Exactly. So it was some very interesting conversations. Interesting. Thank you.
President's report, I talked about where I had been, other than now it's the time of the year, I'm trying to start to get around to some of the different clusters, so I may even reach out to you and I think we may get some folks together to try and go to a few games and some other events. Uh, nothing more from my report. Treasurers' report? No report. Committee reports, legal contracts, and board policy.
I'm sure for the third and final reading, uh, we are presenting our revised new policy 6605 on crowdfunding and we are requesting approval tonight.
We have a motion on revised new policy 6605 for crowdfunding. We'll move second. We have a motion in the second on the policy, for approval of the policy. Any comments, questions, or discussions on the policy? Hearing none, roll call please. Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Finance and Capital Management, report instructional policy and student achievement.
You just heard it.
Can I go back to instructional policy?
Yes, sir.
Especially representative for, um, the trustee board and Northeast Ohio School Board Association, while region. Wanted to thank the board for your nomination for that award. I was really sort of caught off guard when you called my name. I wasn't, but I had to have this time. So I was, uh, this time, good or bad. So, uh, I appreciate your support. Uh, this has always been for me, a, a teamwork, a team effort. Uh, and so I thank you for your honoring me by nominating me and, and hopefully, uh, because my name is there, will be represented at the school board and, uh, this will help to, you know, uh, encourage others to do the same, hopefully, in the future. So thank you so very much.
Thank you for all the work you're doing. Under unfinished business, we have guaranteed maximum price for 10 North Main Street. Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, so, um, as you know, for the delivery method for the renovations at 10 North Main, uh, the new administration building, which will house both admin and the I-Staff Development Center, we use a delivery method as we're using on our facilities, construction, uh, projects, a construction manager at risk, which means the, uh, construction manager is, uh, putting out the bids for, um, the various phases of construction and will actually hold the contracts for, will hold the contracts for, um, the project. And so all the subcontracts will be held by the construction manager versus Akron Public Schools. And so the first part of that is what we call, uh, once, uh, well, he has received, um, the various contracts, we have what we call the, um, guaranteed maximum price or, uh, where the contractors and the construction manager takes the risk for making sure that the prices don't exceed those amounts. So, um, again, uh, the whole gist behind the consolidation was really making us more efficient, making sure that our staff from I and admin are under one roof and can collaborate and that we can put, um, more of our resources to the classroom. So, um, here are the latest plans for the building. And, um, on the first floor, as you can see, our, uh, engagement center, which is, um, right in this area, uh, which will be off of Main Street where most of the services that the public would need from us, uh, getting transcripts, uh, looking at, uh, assignments, open enrollment, um, all of those types of things that people come in and out of this building or the I-Staff Development Center for, we want to try and engage them, uh, at one location versus coming into a building and going up and down different floors. We will still have some people who will need to go up, but most of our business should be handled there. And also on the first floor, we have the board room, um, located there also. And then Student Services Subway has a contract for, what, four more years? So they'll be, uh, they'll be there for, uh, a little bit while longer. Um, on the second floor, uh, I think this is Karen's dream for staff development. So, uh, we really do need better conference space and this will provide that a series of rooms of blue lines represent, um, movable partitions, so we can make one larger or break it up, um, in various areas into, uh, smaller areas for professional development, uh, some limited office space on those floors. So we'll be able to handle more of our professional development, um, activities, um, in a much more professional manner. We'll also relocate the, um, uh, the I memorabilia that's currently at the I-Staff Development Center to this floor and we'll call it the I-Staff Development Center as well, um, in recognition of, uh, Mr. I's contributions to Akron Public Schools. On the third floor, this is probably, uh, the one that's not necessarily going to change a lot because all of the dotted lines are the cubicle arms, uh, on both sides of the building, east and west. The interior offices pretty much stay the same on the southern end. I think a lot of these, uh, if I remember correctly, some of these are existing. Um, but, uh, these will be offices, um, for which departments?
Pretty much all of I.
Yes. Thank you. And then on the fourth floor, we have our tech services, um, the treasurer's office and unit resources, um, for this one. And this one requires some modifications in terms of adding in some collective workspaces. Here is a tech area for some collaboration among the, uh, tech folks. And then, of course, the whole treasurer's suite at the, at the end of the floor and several other offices on the fourth floor. And then on the fifth floor, uh, the superintendent's office, which includes a office for the board, um, business affairs, we have curriculum and instruction, uh, secondary education, elementary education, specialty, uh, programs and, um, communications and community and partnerships and several other, uh, departments will be on the fifth floor. So we had to do some major work, um, electrical, uh, flooring. Most of the floors, um, other than one are carpeted, so, uh, pretty much around the loop Most of the actual floor plan, I think, will stay the same. The glass that you can see into the other room may actually, you know, be reduced. It may just be quarter or third, you know, from the top down. There are some things that we have to look at there. Again, other, you know, options for how do we take the public when they come into the building and make it a more engaging place than what we currently have here? So those are some of the things that our designers are working through for us at the building. So the timeline for North Main, again, in March, we purchased the building. In June, WELT was chosen as the construction manager at risk. Subcontractor bids were just due. This month, we'll also look at some programming and some updates. So we'll be starting some of those options, and some of that will help define what some of the volume engineering might be. And then in terms of moving, right now, we did have some issues getting contractors. This is a busy place. And so, because of that, it looks like March would be the first option to move some folks in. And this is the priority in terms of floors. We want to start on the fourth floor because, number one, that's our data center, finance. I mean, the one thing we have to do is pay our employees and pay bills. And we can't do that without our computer system up and running, because all of that with munis is electronic. And so, we want to, and they need some of the most, with our data center, a lot of the electrical work has to happen on that floor. So getting fourth floor out the way, then getting the fifth floor out the way, then coming down to the third floor, because most of those folks are currently at the I-Staff Development Center, then coming down to floor one as a priority for the boardroom, the teaching, and some of the teaching and learning department, student services. And then floor two, which would be the professional development center, because currently that goes on over at I. So at some point, we will have portions of Ten North Main with activity in it in terms of operations. This building's still under operation, and the I-Staff Development Center under operation. And then gradually moving folks onto the other floors. For the I building, it has to stay open because of the radio station until Elit opens next summer. And that appears to be, still be on schedule for that. And then gradually getting out of this building, because of course, with the property transfers, United Way owns most of our parking lot, with the exception of the space right in front of the door here. So we'll be working with WELT to get the phasing of that and how we actually get those moved in. But we're targeting March for fourth floor, the fourth floor, and then working through the other ones after that. I would imagine by May or June, I want to get everyone in before the end of the school year, because we typically have professional development over the summer. And we would really like to get in this building and get all that underway. In terms of our budget and costs, remember, there was a $10 million bond that was issued, and it's being held by the city. Out of that bond, 9.1 was the purchase price. Right now, our guaranteed maximum price is approximately $3 million for the programming and updates to the building. And that budget will be financed with our tip revenues that come from the city permanent improvement funds, and for the professional development space, some of that will come out of our educational service center funds as well. Now, any questions?
Well, thank you. I know we've spent a lot of time talking about that, both in finance committee and institutional policy. All of the committees have kind of had a hand in that, and it's something we've been working on for a long time. So thank you for the update and for all of the work that goes into it. With that, we do have a need for a motion to approve the resolution with WELT and the guaranteed maximum price, both with our instructional manager at risk. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Do we have any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Meadville?
Yes.
Under new business, we have a proposed MOU for the AEA Vice President Position and College and Career Academy of Akron Program Specialist Position. You received all of that in your board packet, in the Dear Board Member letter. Do you have anyone that's going to say anything about that, or are we just looking for a motion?
On the, I'll ask Dr. McWilliams Woods to just review the AEA memorandum of understanding.
The College and Career Academy Program Specialist component of this is for, as you can imagine, rolling out the College and Career Academy work is transformational work, pre-K through 12. And we have established a structure with Pat Shanks' leadership, transformation team, that has continued the work, basically, of a master planning group that met, that now this is the nuts and bolts teams working through. So how do schedules change? And how do we look at our professional learning communities? What's the curriculum piece? How do we fit the schedule in with all of our businesses and getting students out to businesses? How are we going to do that? There's a million questions now that we have to answer. And so, in partnership with AEA, we've created some work teams that have teachers and administrators. And Michael Householder is going to be the representative that's working. He's already been working very closely with Rachel, Teka, and the rest of our team around the room on being that constant present at all of those meetings, presence at all of those meetings, so that we can quickly make some decisions and work through how all of this is going to look over the next few years. So it's, we're excited that Michael was willing to do this. And the proposal tonight is to create this position so that he can work side by side with us as a representative from AEA, but also as an employee of the College and Career Academy office.
Any questions, comments, discussion? Just a big thank you for the work that you guys do and for Michael's partnership and being able to create it, it's really important, thank you. Any comments, questions, discussions? Hearing none, roll call please. We'll take a motion. So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Roll call please. All right. Next, we have the collaboration agreement between Akron Public Schools and LeBron James Family Foundation, which is also in your board packet, as were the trademark license agreements for us to them, them to us. Does someone, someone in my talk table?
Yeah, so in the collaboration agreement, it's actually, it is a little timely, because it's for the I-Promise School. And it works through the particulars of the term, our initial term of the agreement to operate the I-Promise School, the responsibilities of, you know, each particular party as it relates to publicity, you know, sending things out over social media, which we're not restricted and they're not restricted. Also, some protections for the school. I mean, we felt, we were real adamant about, you know, letting that school, because it's new, run within, you know, our county without any other competition, realizing that there will be people who will come to Akron to see how the I-Promise School runs, establishing an executive committee like we do with Akron Early College and with our STEM school. So that's really no different. And just the other duties of, and responsibilities of each of the parties regarding the operation of the school. We've had our outside counsel, internal counsel, worked with their counsel, and even put in some dispute resolution language in the agreement. So you've had an opportunity to, you know, review that, and-
And the trademark agreements are just-
They're separate, right, exactly. Yes, of our logo and trademark and their logo and trademark.
I know, just on behalf of the board, I want to say thank you. This was a lot to come together and to launch, to open any new school. I mean, as we've all pretty much learned sitting around the table, is no easy task to watch you guys do. But the I-Promise School is in particular something, a whole new, a beast of its own just because of the partnership that we have with LeBron James and LeBron James Family Foundation. I know that it was difficult, and there were lots of conversations to be had. And so, so much thanks to LeBron James, Michelle Campbell and Foundation, but also to you guys for negotiating on behalf of our students and on behalf of the district, and all of the things that you were mindful of that went into this agreement. Thank you, thank you, thank you for all the work you put in. It was very much appreciated, I know on our end. So any comments, questions, or discussion on this or the trademark and licensing agreements? If not, we'll take each one in turn. Do we have a motion on the collaboration agreement?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Sorry, roll call please.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
I'm mixing up my words. All right, trademark and license agreement, APS and LeBron James Trademarks LLC. Do we have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
And the trademark and license agreement, APS and LeBron James Family Foundation, a motion?
So move. Second.
Motion and a second, any comments, questions, or discussion? Hearing none, roll call please.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Reverend Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
All right, is there any other business to come before this board, before I ask for a motion to recess into executive session? Any comments? All right. Hearing none, pursuant to Ohio Revised Code Section 121.22G3 to consult with the board council to discuss disputes involving the board and the school district subject to pending or imminent court action, and revised section 121.22G4 to discuss negotiations or collective bargaining, review negotiations or bargaining sessions with employees concerning compensation and other terms or conditions of employment, looking for a motion to enter into executive session, please. We have a motion and a second. Any comments, questions, discussions, last but not least, hearing none, roll call please.
Mrs. Lasher?
Yes.
Mrs. Mansfield?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mrs. Walker?
Yes.
Mr. Alexander?
Yes.
Mrs. Baylor?
Yes.
Mr. Bravo?
Yes.